Another meeting of the Waukees City Council to order. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Becky, we please do roll call. Mayor Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Crone?
Here.
Councilmember Grove?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Here.
Agenda item D is open forum. Open forum is the time for anyone here tonight, here tonight, to address the council on any subject over which the council has the authority to act or on any subject on the agenda other than a public hearing. If you would like to speak tonight and provide your comments or questions to the council, please approach the podium or raise your hand. If you're participating via Zoom, click on the raise hand icon located under the reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Okay, open forum is closed. Agenda item E is agenda approval. Can I get a motion?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? Well, it's a long one tonight, folks. So sorry, you're gonna have to listen to me talk a lot. Other than that, we'll take a vote for approval. Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Agenda item G1 is a public hearing on the annexation of consenting properties by the city of Waukees, Iowa for Jay Larson Homes LLC, property A. Now to close, public hearing open. Becky, have you received any written correspondence?
None received in the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Director Cass?
Hey, good evening, Mayor Clark and council members. Before you tonight is a consideration for annexation, voluntary annexation into the city of Waukees by Jay Larson Homes LLC. The property is generally located south of 300th Street or University Avenue, and it is located directly west of T Avenue. And it is approximately 80 acres in total. It's the area colored in blue on the screen. The city's civic campus property would be to the west, or excuse me, to the east of here. And our public works facility would be to roughly in the, to the northeast of this property. Jay Larson Homes filed a voluntary annexation application with us a couple of months ago. Again, it's about 80 acres in area. The Dallas County Auditor has verified the ownership and the legal description of the property. There is no property included in here that is involuntary. It's a 100% voluntary annexation. And the property is included in our future land use map, primarily identified for residential development in the Waukees 2040, Imagine Waukees 2040 Comprehensive Plan. Staff recommends holding the public hearing, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone, this is not a bell at all. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium. If you're participating via Zoom, you can click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions at this time? And now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G2 is a public hearing on the annexation of consenting properties by the city of Waukees, Iowa for Jay Larson Homes LLC, property B. Now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence?
None received in the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Director Cass?
All right, so we're not going too far away from the previous annexation request. This property is 70 acres in area. And again, the property owner is Jay Larson Homes LLC. This is located east of T Avenue and south of 300th Street or University Avenue. Again, city civic campus property is located approximately a mile to the east, and then the public works facility would be directly to the northeast of the property. This is a 100% voluntary annexation. The Dallas County Auditor has verified the ownership and the legal description for the property. And this, similar to the previous annexation request, this is also included in our comprehensive land use plan and identified for future residential development. Staff recommends holding the public hearing, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. All right, does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular public hearing? If so, please approach the podium. Or if participating via Zoom, click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions at this time?
Just out of curiosity, why did we do it in two separate requests instead of one?
We are required to do them in two separate because they're not, because the road separates the two, so we have to do them in two different requests.
Okay, interesting. Yeah, thanks. We don't see it very often. I don't know. Yeah.
All right, and now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G3 is a public hearing on the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of notes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder not to exceed $9 million in water revenue capital loan notes. This is for the Central Iowa Waterworks asset transfer. I now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any written correspondence?
None received in the clerk's office.
Director Burkhart?
Good evening, Mayor and council. As the title said, this is to enter into a loan agreement to do the city's, basically, our buy-in for that asset transfer, once we join Central Iowa Waterworks. Invoice is due at the end of December. The total of the invoice is actually $8,743,000. We're gonna use $1,743 of cash, leaving the loan actually being for $7 million. We did the not to exceed because we didn't have all the final numbers at that point. But it is our intention to use partial cash and only borrow the $7 million.
Thank you. All right, at this time, if anyone in the audience would like to speak, voice any comments or questions on this particular public hearing item, please approach the podium or raise your hand. If you're participating via Zoom, again, click on the raise hand icon. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions at this time? And now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G4 is a public hearing on the proposed amendment number 16 to the Waukees Unified Urban Renewal Plan. Now declare this public hearing open. We received any correspondence?
None received in the clerk's office.
Thank you. Director Brown?
Good evening, Mayor Clark and council members. Each year, staff review is our city urban renewal plans, and you have me to thank for all of these. So I apologize, but updates are needed this year for our unified, number 16, amendment number 16. This is pretty simple here. We're just removing property from our 2004 parcels that need to be removed. We're also updating some descriptions and timelines for previously approved projects. And just so you know, this remains consistent with our comp plan here. We did hold a consultation meeting on Monday, October 13, and we did invite all the affected taxing entities within the plan area. No representatives did attend the meeting at that time. Staff does recommend holding a public hearing, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or raise your hand or click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls on Zoom. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions at this time? All right, I now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G5 is a public hearing on the proposed amendment number 10 to the Waukees Consolidated Urban Renewal Plan. I now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence on this?
None received in the city clerk's office.
Thank you. Director Brown?
Okay, proposed amendment number 10 to Waukees Consolidated Urban Renewal Plan updates and consolidates a city's urban renewal framework to better align with the current development needs and priorities. It combines town center commercial and quarter commercial urban renewal area with the existing Waukees Consolidated Urban Renewal Area. This consolidated simplifies the administration and allows the city to more effectively use future TIF revenues for economic development. It adds properties. The properties that were added, I believe, here are in green. And you can also see that Town Center Commercial and the Quarter are outlined here. It also removes property, which we'll talk a little bit further in the agenda with Kettlestone Lakes. That property is outlined in red here on the map as well. Additionally, it does update and expand projects, revises the cost estimates similarly to what I mentioned in the previous plan amendment with Unified, and then authorizes future development agreements as well. Similarly, I did hold a consultation meeting with the taxing entities. No one attended that meeting. It was at the same time. Would be happy to answer any questions, but do recommend holding a public hearing.
Thank you. Would anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, like to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular public hearing? If so, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon. There are no hands raised in Zoom. All right, does council have any questions at this time? All right, I now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G6 is a public hearing on the proposed Kettlestone Lakes District 1 Urban Renewal Plan. I now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence?
None received in the city clerk's office.
Director Brown?
Okay, this is a new urban renewal area that we are creating. And just as I mentioned, the previous one that we were moving, we are moving, removing this area from consolidated. This is approximately 54 acres. This is southeast Ashworth and west of Grand Prairie Parkway. So you can see that on the map outlined there. The purpose of this urban renewal area is to promote commercial and industrial development for economic development purposes, to authorize the use of TIF to support infrastructure and private development. Oh, this is not voting well for me. The primary project is a development agreement that we will talk about a little later in the agenda. We did hold a consultation meeting, again, as mentioned, on October 13, and invited the taxing entities. And we also, per statutory requirement, we did go to Planning and Zoning Commission on October 28 to present this plan for conformance with our comp plan. And they did review it and did submit it to you as well. We would, I would be happy to answer any questions, and do recommend holding a public hearing.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions? If so, please approach the podium. Or if participating via Zoom, click on the raise hand icon. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Any questions? All right, I now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G7 is a public hearing on the proposed amendment number 1 to Kettlestone Phase 1 Commercial Urban Renewal Plan. I now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence on this?
No, none received in the city clerk's office.
Jennifer?
So amendment number 1 to Kettlestone Phase 1, this is planned, was originally approved in June 2023. This is the first amendment, obviously, and this primarily removes property, which you can see on the map up here is these like pink or salmon color here. This is the athletic complex out there, the gym properties. And updates, the primarily updates the project description, which is the development agreement, the Athletic Youth Foundation, which we will also talk about later in the agenda here. And the development, which now will occur in five phases as opposed to four phases as well. So that is outlined and included in this amendment as well. And again, the, we had a consultation meeting, and invited the taxing entities, and no one attended that meeting. Happy to answer any questions and recommend holding a public hearing.
Thank you. Anyone here tonight that would like to speak on this particular public hearing item is welcome to do so at this time. Or if participating via Zoom, click on the raise hand icon. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Any questions? I now declare this particular public hearing item closed. And if we're keeping track, we're now halfway through with public hearings. Agenda item G8 is a public hearing on the proposed amendment number 1 to Kettlestone Phase 2 Commercial Urban Renewal Plan. And I declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any written correspondence?
No, none received in the clerk's office.
Okay, Kettlestone Phase 2 is in the same area. And this is also, the purpose of this amendment is to remove property that is south of the gyms. This is the dank, for those that are familiar, this is the Dancing With Roxy's property there, that building there. It also updates the description, the, primarily the development there with the Iowa Youth Athletic Foundation, and also points out the development that will occur in the five phases. We did hold the consultation meeting on October 13. No one, none of the taxing entities did attend. We would recommend holding a public hearing. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. If anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, would like to address the council and voice their comments or questions, now is your chance. I'm gonna get progressively shorter as we go on. Please go ahead and approach the podium, or if participating via Zoom, click on the raise hand icon. No hands raised in Zoom. Council have any questions? Now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G9 is a public hearing on the proposed amendment number 1 to Kettlestone Phase 3 Commercial Urban Renewal Plan. And now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence?
No, no written correspondence in the clerk's office.
Thank you. Jennifer?
I will also get shorter. The boundaries of this amendment, the boundaries are unchanged for phase 3. We are just updating the description. And we held a consultation meeting, and no one attended. I'm happy to answer any questions. Recommend holding a public hearing.
Thank you. If anyone here would like to address the council on this particular public hearing item, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon. There are no hands raised in Zoom. All right, I now declare this particular public hearing item closed. Agenda item G10 is a public hearing on the proposed amendment number 1 to Kettlestone Phase 4 Commercial Urban Renewal Plan. And now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence?
None received in the clerk's office.
Jennifer?
Okay, project, phase 4, excuse me, is also, the boundaries for project 4, or phase 4, also remain unchanged. We are just updating the project description here and the five phases. Held a consultation meeting. Happy to answer any questions. Recommend the, your public hearing.
Thank you. Anyone here tonight would like to speak on this particular public hearing item, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions? All right, I now declare this public hearing closed. Agenda item G11 is a public hearing on the proposed Kettlestone Phase 5 Commercial Urban Renewal Plan. Now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence?
What if I said yes? No, there, no, no correspondence in the city clerk's office.
I don't think you've ever said yes at night. I don't think I've ever heard you say yes. Becky's cracking jokes.
Jennifer?
Okay, so with phase 5, we are creating a new urban renewal area for the purpose of promoting commercial and industrial for economic development, authorizing TIF to support infrastructure and private development. This is just, the previous amendments, we have removed the property in the previous urban renewal areas, and now we're creating the new one and putting those properties in phase 5, and then updating the project, as I mentioned, in which we will also talk about as we talk about the development, the amendment to the development agreement as well. We did hold a consultation meeting on October 13, and I also took this to the Planning and Zoning Commission per the statutory requirement on October 28 for conformance with our comp plan as well. I would be happy to answer any question, questions, and recommend holding a public hearing.
If anyone here tonight would like to speak on this particular public hearing item, please go ahead and approach the podium. Or if participating via Zoom, click on the raise hand icon. No hands raised in Zoom. Does council have any questions? All right, and now declare this particular public hearing closed. Agenda item G12 is a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a development agreement with Kettlestone Lakes LLC and APGPP LLC. And I declare this particular public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence?
No, none received in the clerk's office.
Thank you.
The proposed development agreement between the city of Waukees, Kettlestone Lakes, and APGPP, I'm not sure why that, they picked that name. It's a tongue twister to me. Is for private commercial improvements and the construction of public infrastructure within the Kettlestone Lakes District 1, which, and just included the map here for Kettlestone Lake District 1 here. And the key terms of the agreement include the public infrastructure for southeast Parkview Crossing Drive and southeast Kettlestone Boulevard. The estimated cost is about $10 million, and the estimated target completion is December 31 of 2025. Commercial improvements include about $12 million minimum investment to be completed by December 31 of 2026 on each respective property, developer property. The public improvements will be dedicated to the city. Economic development grants will be 12 annual grants funded by the tax increment revenues generated. There'll be 50% to each developer. And I just wanna make sure I didn't miss anything. And I think I mentioned already, the cap, the max will be $10 million total for those. I'd be happy to answer any questions and would recommend a public hearing.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, want to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon located in. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Council have any questions? I now declare this particular public hearing closed. Agenda item G13 is a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a First Amendment to the Agreement for Private Development with Caliber Land Company LLC, Kettlestone Central LLC, and Iowa Youth Athletic Foundation. And now declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any correspondence?
No, none received in the clerk's office.
Jennifer?
So the, on May 30, 2023, the city entered into an agreement for private development with those listed. The agreement outlined the development of commercial improvements across multiple phases. And now, this new, this first, this amendment will reflect the new phase, the phase 5. And, and that, as we discussed in the previous, previous urban renewals in the public hearings that we had, it defines phase 5 commercial improvements as a 12,300 square foot commercial building, and obviously, the athletic gyms as well, and requiring a minimum investment of 40 million with that phase 5 improvements. Completion of the phase 5 commercial improvements by December 31, 2025. The big change will be the economic development grants will be provided for 20 annual payments at 100% of the increment. And this, these specific changes are due to the fact that, and you may have read this in the paper too today, that the developer learned that, and the Iowa Youth Athletic Foundation learned that they may not, they may not be tax exempt as they originally thought they would be. So the city has worked with them, and staff has worked with them to make some changes to the development agreement with this First Amendment to extend the payment term, and then to increase the actual increment to 100%. We also increased the maximum of the grant under that agreement to 55 million just to make accommodations for that. Those are the major changes in this First Amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Do recommend holding a public hearing.
Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, like to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular public hearing item? If so, please approach the podium or click on the raise hand icon located in the reactions controls. There are no hands raised in Zoom. Council have any questions?
I have a couple. What was the previous max grant for the 55 million?
39.
39, so we're adding 16 to that. That 16 over 20 years, is that the anticipated cities portion? I'm going to assume the answer is yes. That the cities anticipated revenue from the building that is no longer going to be tax exempt over those 20 years?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you wanna add something to that, Brad?
I was just gonna say, minus debt service, which the city will still receive on that, which we previously had not anticipated with the agreement.
So we're coming out ahead on this. Okay, thank you.
All right. I now declare this public hearing closed. You can. Agenda item G14 is a public hearing on proposals for the purchase and removal of a structure owned by the city of Waukees at 825 Ashworth Drive. And I declare this public hearing open. Becky, have you received any written correspondence on this issue?
No, none received in the clerk's office. Thank you.
Brad?
Thank you, Mayor. Previously, earlier this year, the city did acquire the residential property located 825 Ashworth Drive in anticipation for a future road realignment that we do have incorporated into our long-term capital improvement plan. The city made an initial effort to, or attempt to see if anyone had interest in removing the structure on the property as opposed to demolition of that structure. We did not receive any bids as it pertains to the ask that was out there today. We would anticipate that we'll hold off on doing any sort of demolition and bring this back up in the spring to see if there's further interest. There's no specific timetable. It was just a matter of whether or not we had to winterize the property in advance for the upcoming cold weather. So with that being said, we will proceed forward with winterization. There's no further action on here tonight, but because we set the public hearing, we do need to hold it. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone here tonight, either in the council chambers or on Zoom, wish to address the council and voice their comments or questions on this particular public hearing item? There are no hands raised in Zoom. All right. Council have any questions? All right, I now declare this public hearing item closed. Okay. Item H1, consideration of approval of a resolution approving the annexation of consenting properties by the city of Waukees, Iowa for Jay Larson Homes LLC, property A. Can I get a motion? Move to approve? Second.[1647.81] Andy?
All right, I'll I'll add a few words here to give Jennifer a little bit more of a break. Um, uh, I I just did want to note, um, so this is the property located east, or excuse me, west of T Avenue, south of the of three hundred street, approximately eighty acres in area. Uh, I did want to add uh that uh staff has uh provided notification to adjoining property owners, public utilities, and all other entities required by chapter three sixty eight of Iowa code um in compliance with those notification requirements. And also, we did hold a consultation with the township and the um uh board supervisors. Happy to take any questions. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Item H two, consideration of approval of a resolution approving the annexation of consenting properties by the city of Waki, Iowa for Jay Larson Homes LLC, Property B. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Andy?
Uh, similar to Property A, uh, staff did uh provide notification uh in conformance with chapter three sixty eight of Iowa code as well as hold the uh consultation with uh the the town, the the township uh trustees, as well as the board supervisors. I'm happy to take any questions. Staff recommends approval of the resolution.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item H three, consideration of approval of a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for not to exceed nine million dollars water revenue capital loan notes for the Central Iowa Water Works asset transfer. Can I get a motion?
Move.
Approve.
Second. Linda?
Uh, as mentioned during the public hearing, this is for that buy-in for Central Iowa Water Works. The loan agreement will be through Iowa Finance Authority. Uh, the interest rate is three point zero one percent and it's a twenty-year life of that note. So um unless you have any further questions, staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
All right. Now we're back to Jennifer. Item H four for the urban renewal plans, H four A, Amendment Number sixteen to the Waki Unified Urban Renewal Plan. H four A one, consideration of approval of a resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development and blighted area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting the plan amendment. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Jennifer?
I have nothing further to add and would recommend approving the resolution. Do you want me to add more?
Any question? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Item H four A two, consideration of approval of an ordinance for the Division of Revenues under section four oh three point one nine Code of Iowa. This is an introduction and a first reading.
Introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading in title only.
Second.
Jennifer?
Uh, I I don't think I mentioned this on the first, so I'll just say that the parcels to be removed are the two thousand and four parcels in in red and quite simply, we're at the time limit for collecting tax increment on these parcels. So staff, staff would recommend the first reading and the ordinance, first reading of the intro and first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item H four B uh for amendment number ten to the Waki Consolidated Urban Renewal Plan. H four B one, consideration of approval of a resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting the plan amendment. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second. Jennifer?
Nothing further to add and recommend approval of the resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Item H four B two. Consideration of approval of an ordinance for the Division of Revenues under section four oh three point one nine Code of Iowa for the twenty twenty five ordinance parcels. This is also an introduction and a first reading.
Introduce the ordinance and move to approve the reading in title only.
Second. Jennifer?
Uh, so these are the twenty twenty five uh consolidated TIF ordinance parcels and they are um highlighted in yellow and I apologize, they're kind of really small, but there are nine properties that are added uh across the consolidated uh urban renewal area and that's just new development and new incremented increment that will be generated and that's for the purpose of uh collecting uh TIF and uh the uh the Division of of Revenue. So um staff uh recommends the introduction and first reading.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
H four C for Kettlestone Lakes District One Urban Renewal Plan. H four C one, consideration of approval of a resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting the plan. Can I get a motion?
She will.
I will repeat it like six more times.
Then she'll go again. Jennifer. So glad you're here tonight.
I have nothing further to add. Staff recommends approval of the reso- resolution.
Any questions? All right, please vote.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Item H four C two, consideration of approval of an ordinance for the Division of Revenues under section four oh three point one nine Code of Iowa. It's also an introduction and first reading.
Introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading in title only.
Second. Jennifer?
The or, this establishes the TIF ordinance for Kettlestone Lakes District One, which is here on the screen and allows for the division of property tax uh revenue under Iowa code. Um, happy to and take any questions and staff recommends introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
All right, item H four D.
She goes on it.
Uh, amendment number one to Kettlestone Phase One Commercial Urban Renewal Plan, just for that. I don't feel bad that you're going to be on this side of your seat waiting tomorrow at all. Uh, H four D one, committee consideration of approval of a resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting the plan amendment. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
All right, Jennifer?
Nothing further to add. Staff recommends approving the resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Item H four D two, consideration of approval of an ordinance for the Division of Revenues under section four oh three point one nine Code of Iowa. This is an introduction and first reading.
Introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading in title only.
Second. Jennifer?
This order. Sorry, this amend, this amends the ordinance to reflect the removal of the gym property. Um, staff recommends the intro and first reading of the ordinance. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item H four E, amendment number one to Kettlestone Phase Two Commercial Urban Renewal Plan. H four E one, consideration of approval of a resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting the plan amendment. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
I'm honestly trying to get through it on one breath, but it's not working.
Don't give up.
Very good. All right. Jennifer?
Uh, nothing further to add. Staff recommends approving the resolution. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item H four E two, consideration of approval of an ordinance for the Division of Revenues under section four oh three point one nine Code of Iowa. This is also an introduction and first reading.
I introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading in title only.
Second.
Jennifer?
Um, we're on phase two, right?
Yes.
I'm getting lost now.
Sure.
Um, okay, so this, this is uh, this ordinance is uh amended to uh remove the uh, the Dancing with Roxy's property. Um, and staff would recommend intro and first reading and I happy to answer any questions. As long as I'm not lost.
Any questions? All right, please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Item H four F, amendment number one to Kettlestone Phase Three Commercial Urban Renewal Plan. Item H four F one, consideration of approval of a resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting the plan amendment. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second. Jennifer?
Uh, nothing further to add. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
I thought you were gonna make it.
Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Item H four G, amendment number one to Kettlestone Phase Four Commercial Urban Renewal Plan. H four G one, consideration of approval of a resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting the plan amendment. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second. Jennifer?
Nothing further to add. Happy to answer any question.
Any questions?
I wish I did.
All right, please vote.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Only have to listen to me say it one more time. Item H four, H Kettlestone Phase Five Commercial Urban Renewal Plan. H four H one, consideration of approval of a resolution determining an area of the city to be an economic development area and that the rehabilitation, conservation, redevelopment, development, or a combination thereof of such area is necessary in the interest of the public health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city, designating such area as appropriate for urban renewal projects and adopting the plan. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Jennifer?
Nothing further to add. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Item H four H two, consideration of approval of an ordinance for the Division of Revenues under section four oh three point one nine Code of Iowa. This is an introduction and first reading.
Introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading in title only. Second.
Uh, this is the TIF ordinance for Kettlestone Phase Five Commercial, which is highlighted up on the screen there. Um, again, that's the gym properties and the the newly created area there. And it obviously helps us collect revenues and the division of revenues there. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
All right. Item H five, consideration of approval of a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a development agreement by and among the city of Waki, Kettlestone Lakes LLC and APGPP LLC. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second. Jennifer?
Oops. I wanted, I was going faster. I wanted to go faster. Um, the only thing I'll add is that the city's obligation to make economic development grant payment, payments is limited to the availability of of tax increment uh generated by the uh commercial improvements, obviously. So um otherwise, I don't have anything else and happy to answer any questions. And we recommend the execution of the development agreement.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item H six, consideration of approval of a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a first amendment to the Agreement for Private Development by and among the city of Waki and Caliber Land Company LLC, Kettlestone Central LLC, and the Iowa Youth Athletic Foundation. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
Jennifer?
Uh, nothing further to add. Staff recommends execution of the first amendment of the development agreement. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Item I one, consent agenda part one. Can I get a motion?
I'm moved. Second.
Any discussion? Please vote.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I two, consideration of approval of an ordinance for the Division of Revenues under section four oh three point one nine Code of Iowa for Kettlestone Residential Urban Renewal Area Projects Two and Three Property. This is an introduction and first reading.
I introduce the ordinance and move to approve the first reading in title only.
Thank you.
Second.
Jennifer?
I made it.
This is uh uh in reference to the urban renewal plan adopted on June uh fifth. This is for the Kettlestone Residential TIF ordinances. Um, this is for uh projects two and three within the um Kettlestone Residential area. It's a little hard to see, but you can see that um it's it's far, the farthest north is pro- phase two and phase three is um far, is west here, but it's establishing the the TIF ordinances when, wi- within that uh project area. And so obviously, it allows for us for the division of property tax revenue under Iowa code. Happy to take any questions and would recommend introducing introduction and first reading.
Thank you. Any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Bottenberg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I three, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend chapter fifty-two noise control by repealing the current chapter in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof, chapter fifty-two noise control. This is a second reading.
Move to approve the second reading of the ordinance in title only.
Second. Chief?
Good evening. As you may recall, this uh cleans up some code language and then the two substantial changes are related to giving us uh some ability to hold those who allow um loud music or uh bands outside of the city code responsible, not just the people actually operating that uh equipment and then also addressing the uh exhaust problem with uh the loud uh backfire sounds and other sounds coming from exhaust systems. Happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Any questions?
Not a question, but a comment. I had no idea what you were talking about on those exhaust systems. And then the day after, so I don't know what, two weeks ago, I heard one, and I said, ah, yes, ban those. So that all checked out.
We're here for you.
That was perfect.
He does not live near me, or he would have already known. All right, please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Item I four, consideration of approval of an ordinance to repeal Chapter 110 Natural Gas Service Rates and Charges. This is an introduction, first, second, third, and final reading.
Introduce the ordinance, move to approve the first reading of the ordinance in title only. Waive the second, third readings, place it on final passage.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Uh, no further actions. This is really a housecleaning item, uh, since we no longer operate the gas utility, so we are, uh, repealing this chapter, uh, as it applies specifically to our gas service rates and charges. So, happy to take any questions, but staff recommends, um, the introduction of the ordinance, approving the first reading in title only, and waiving the second, third readings, and placing it on final passage.
Thank you. Any questions?
Oh, no. A few more things.
Hundred and twenty more easements or so. All right, please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Item I five, consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 150 Trees by repealing the current chapter in its entirety and enacting in lieu thereof, Chapter 150 Trees. This is a second, third, and final reading.
I'm moved to approve the second reading of the ordinance, waive the third, and place it on final passage.
Second.
Matt?
Evening, Mayor and Council. I don't have anything further to add from what I said last night, but, or last time, but the, as a reminder, these are the necessary amendments to become a, or to apply to become a TreeCityUSA community, so.
All right, any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Item I six, consideration of approval of a resolution approving agreement for professional consulting services with Foth Infrastructure and Environment LLC for Sixth Street Functional Design and Traffic Study I-80 to Ashworth Road. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Rudy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, up on the screen is a map, kind of representing the area that we'll be doing the traffic study, um, outlined in the red dash line. Um, it extends to the west to S Avenue approximately, uh, Ashworth Road is that north boundary. I-80 is the south, and then almost to Grand Prairie Parkway. Um, so that's really our study area, and then doing actual conceptual design or functional design for Sixth Street, or known as Yute Avenue, uh, from Ashworth South to the interstate. And we'll actually dip a little bit south of the interstate to Interstate Parkway, too, um, as well as, um, Herboff Drive, the, uh, that green line extending east-west, north of 80 on that map, um, understanding what that roadway configuration needs to be as well. So, it's really setting us up as we're growing in this quadrant of our community so that we understand what we need to be planning for, for right-of-way purposes, for utility corridors, um, and those like items. So, there's also environmental services that are involved with this, um, as well as some other, um, preliminary design actions that we would, um, uh, do, and then ultimately use as we progress forward with ultimately a final design and capital project at some point. We don't have anything in the CIP today, but, uh, our intention is to start, um, gearing those projects up to incorporate in that. So, happy to take any questions if there are any. Um, staff recommends approval of the Engineering Consultant Services, um, Agreement. Uh, it's a knock to a seed amount of $239,500.
Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I seven, consideration of approval of a resolution approving final plat for Remington Point to Plat Four. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Melissa?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The owner and applicant is Remington Point LLC. The property is located south of University Avenue and west of Seventeenth Street. It contains 5.41 acres in area. It's outlined in red on the screen. Uh, the property is zoned R2, one and two family residential district with a planned development overlay. The final plat includes 24 lots for single-family residential development. All proposed lots meet or exceed the minimum requirements of the R2 PD, uh, PD1 requirements. A 10-foot wide trail will be provided along the south side of the street, and then a five-foot wide sidewalk will be provided along the north side. Public utilities will be provided. Um, stormwater detention is provided in an off-site detention area, which will be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. And then parkland dedication has been provided with a fee in lieu of land dedication. There will be a neighborhood park just to the southwest of this, um, development within the Castle Ten Point development. Staff recommends approval of the final plat, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Please vote.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
I eight, consideration of approval of a resolution approving site plan for Quick Star 1756 at 3215 Sixth Street. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Melissa?
The owner and applicant is Quick Trip Inc. The property is located south of Indian Ridge Drive and west of Sixth Street. It contains 2.51 acres in area. The property is zoned C1A Neighborhood Commercial District. The final plat related to the project was recently approved about a month ago by city council. The site plan includes the construction of a single-story building for a Quick Star convenience store and gas station. Let me go to the next slide so you can see the site better. The building is just over 9,000 square feet in area and just under 25 feet in height. A fuel canopy will be located to the east of the proposed store. The fuel canopy is 20 feet in height and includes 10 fuel pumps. A monument sign is planned at the southeast corner of the site. A trash enclosure is proposed along the southwest side of the building. Two accesses will be provided into the site, one off of Indian Ridge Drive, and then one off of the private drive off of Sixth Street. Parking and landscaping requirements are being met. A 30-foot landscape buffer will be provided along the east side of the site. A five-foot wide sidewalk will be constructed along the north side of the site, along Indian Ridge Drive, and then a pedestrian connection will be provided into the site from that sidewalk. Public utilities are provided to the site. Stormwater detention will be provided with an off-site detention pond, which is located just to the west, and the detention areas will be privately owned and maintained. Uh, let's go to the building elevations. It looks like a pretty typical Quick Star in this area. Um, proposed to be constructed mostly a brick with metal accents, storefront glazing, and then a metal roof. And then the trash enclosure will be constructed of brick to match the building. And then that's what the fuel pumps will look like with some brick accents on it. I believe that is it. Uh, staff recommends approval of the site plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? It will be called Quick Star, right?
Correct.
Okay. I just, the building said Quick Trip, so, but I thought they couldn't do that in Iowa, so.
That's correct.
Please vote.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Item I nine for Williams Point Plat 17, University Woods. I nine A, consideration of approval of a resolution approving preliminary plat. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Melissa?
And I'll go ahead and present A, B, and C at once. Uh, the owner and applicant is MDBB1 LLC Series Four. The property is located north of Southeast University Avenue and west of Southeast Waco Place. It contains 4.36 acres. The property is zoned C1A Neighborhood Commercial District and C4 Office Park Commercial District. The project includes the construction of a single-story office building on Lot One, which is on the north side of the site. Um, right here, so that's Lot One. Um, the building is proposed to be 13,620 square feet in area and 20 feet in height at the tallest point. The site plan also shows two future buildings, one on Lot Two and one on Lot Three. The building on Lot, on Lot Two, which is on the west side of the site, um, kind of this L-shaped building here, um, that is, uh, proposed to be for future, uh, retail and restaurant uses. And then the building on Lot Three on the east side of the site is proposed to be for another office building. A monument sign is shown at the south side of the site along University Avenue. A trash enclosure is shown at the north end of the site to the west of the proposed building. And then two other trash enclosures are shown as future to be provided with future phases of development. The future buildings and future trash enclosures will, um, be required to come through for a separate site plan approval. Uh, the final plat includes three lots, and then one outlot for stormwater detention. Uh, the stormwater detention outlot is located in the northwest corner of the site. Lot One on the north side, uh, which is, includes that, uh, proposed building is 1.19 acres in area. And Lot Two on the west side is 1.66 acres, and then Lot Three is .94 acres. The stormwater outlot, Outlet Z, is, uh, .58 acres in area. One access point will be provided into the site from Southeast University Avenue. This will be a shared access for the whole development. Parking and landscaping requirements are being met. Landscape buffers will be provided along the northeast and west sides of the site adjacent to the existing residential developments. A 10-foot wide trail exists along the north side of Southeast University Avenue. A pedestrian connection will be provided into the site from that trail. Uh, private sidewalks will be provided throughout the, uh, private development. Uh, public utilities are provided to the site, but all the utilities internal will be privately owned and maintained. Again, stormwater is at that northwest corner of the site, and that will be owned and maintained by the Owners Association. Let's go to the building elevations of the proposed building. So, the building is supposed to look like that. Um, the materials are mostly split-faced stone, metal panels, spandrel glass, and glass. Uh, the trash enclosure will be constructed of the split-faced stone and metal gates to match the building. I think that is it. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat, final plat, and site plan, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? All right, please vote.
Councilmember Pierce?
Yes.
Councilmember Grove?
Yes.
Councilmember Crone?
Yes.
Councilmember Buttonburg?
Yes.
Councilmember Sinclair?
Yes.
Item I nine B, consideration of approval of a resolution approving final plat. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.